Guess we're ready. Okay, welcome to our city council work session. It's five thirty plus one. That one got away with us. We will call the roll and I will dispense with most of the roll call and just say Travis Keel is out of town tonight. There's the roll. Everyone else is here. Like to invite someone to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I can do that.
Okay.
Good afternoon. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Like to ask if someone would like to offer an invocation or a inspirational thought. Anyone? Okay, I'll do it.
Our Father in heaven, we're grateful to be here tonight to be able to serve thee and the citizens of Santaquin. We're grateful for the opportunity to do so, to live in this beautiful city and to be a part of it. We thank thee for all of those good men and women that work hard in our city. As we represent them tonight, we are especially grateful for their services, for their kindness, for their goodness, and the many things that they do throughout our city. We pray for our police and for our fire and ask for thy blessings to be upon all, that they may be safe in all that they do. We pray for this town. We pray for those that may disagree with decisions that are made at times. Pray for thy spirit to be here and ask as we make decisions that we be informed and that thy spirit will be with us. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Like to head right into our discussion items. Spanish Fort Hospital Presentation.
Do you want me to just go into a slide deck here?
Go ahead, yeah.
Okay, great.
Just, just five or six minutes maybe to update you on some of the things happening at Spanish Fort Hospital. And how we serve you. You can just go to the next one, that'd be fine. A couple of things for this year. We have Leapfrog Grade, hospitals received a grade A. Just to let you know what Leapfrog is, it's a national watchdog. And it's the only national watchdog that does a ratings program focused exclusively on things that could have been prevented. So accidents, labeling errors, that kind of thing. We couldn't get an A until this year because you have to be three years old. They use three years worth of back data to look at trends and we were eligible for it this year for the very first time and we got an A straight off the bat. They do it every six months. We just got our second A two weeks ago. And we were only there to announce it yesterday. So in, in the hospital world, this is a fairly big thing in Intermountain. I think we're one of only thirteen hospitals to have gotten an A grade. So we're very pleased about that because of all the efforts that we've made in the last three years. Peter would have been acknowledged. Next up, we opened an ICU in February. This was new for us. It's a flexible med surg unit. And we had a lot of our EMS people there and they got to see it. And from February till now and going into the future, we are better equipped to watch patients that need watching to a higher degree. It means that we don't need to ship as many people up to Utah Valley if they come to us and we, we could, they can be closer to home, you know, we, we can look after them better there. So we're excited about that. Uh, we also this year got the first Mako surgical robot in the Intermountain system. So Intermountain's in half a dozen states. This, this surgical robot specializes in assisting with knee and hip surgeries, partial replacements, full replacements. If I recall, it was June, July that we started this and it's, it's pretty busy. We also have a DaVinci robot and Park City has a Mako now as well, but we, we were the first in Intermountain to get it here at Spanish Fort, so that was us. A couple of notes on community involvement for you. Our caregivers, we donate hours and, and time to the communities where we work. And our caregivers at Spanish Fort Hospital have given about six hundred hours so far this year. Various community efforts, including local events, the school district. That, that little lad at the bottom there is squeezing a pig lung, which is disgusting, but all the kids run to squeeze the pig. They go, yeah, but they have to squeeze it. It's a really interesting sort of thing that goes on. And they learn about those bike safety and all that kind of thing. And also, next slide, we, Intermountain has a big relationship with United Way. Days of Caring, Sub for Center and that, that kind of thing. So we log all the hundreds, thousands of hours that we do up and down the state, get logged and sent into government. So that they know what we're up to because a big part of Intermountain is, is giving back to the communities where we are. So about six hundred hours for your doctors and nurses from that hospital. Looking to the future a little bit. Uh, this is the physician's building. This is actually open now, so I guess this is past, present, and future. This is a building that's right next to the hospital itself. We've got women's health services in there, ear, nose, throat. It's, it's a medical office building for physicians. Um, but it's on our property. It's half full. We've got an eye center there as well. That's continuing to be filled with services that the people want and need right by the hospital. And then looking ahead to next year and the year after, our emergency department runs at about forty percent more work than it was built for. We're looking to expand that. And I've not got any definite dates for you because it has to go through money procurements and the architectures are involved and buildings and facilities and all this kind of thing. But we, we're going to expand our emergency department by hopefully a half dozen rooms, maybe seven rooms, including a trauma room as well. And then our imaging department is running over a hundred percent capacity as well, MRIs, CT scans. We're hoping to expand that as well because there's a demand for it and a need for here. Let's see, just to let you know what our big concerns and needs are for South Utah County. These are our top three concerns, preventative care and annual screenings. Um, and points number one and three kind of overlap. There's, um, South Utah County is above the national average for the incidence of cancers. And we're below the national average for the number of people that get screened for it. So we're really interested in saying to people, come get checked, come get screened. If we can catch things early enough, there's a lot of cancer that can be treated. And we're very well equipped to do so. Um, we're looking to, we're hoping to have a cancer center in the hospital maybe six or seven years. I didn't really say that out loud, but we're, we're, we're hoping for that. The middle one is falls prevention. A surprising number of people that come to our emergency room are a fall. The human body is an amazing thing. It's a little bit clumsy. We don't like stairs, especially as we get older. And trips and falls among all the population, but it is truthfully all age groups that do falls prevention thing for us. So those are our top three concerns. And finally, just to let you know, um, the pink award. This is a national award that's based on data. We don't apply for this. But this is an award that was given to Intermountain Health as a system. There are about three hundred and sixty, um, medical organizations that are looked at in the company and this last year, Intermountain ranked number one out of the country. So that's, that's the broader scale outside of our, our South Utah County towns, but we're quite proud to be a part of that as well. So that's that. Just wanted to give you an update, really, a few things that have come and gone. If you've got any questions.
How many beds do you have?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three rooms, rooms or beds?
Thirty-three beds.
Okay.
So, and there's some overlap. So the, the med surg room has, oh, is it sixteen or twelve? Four of those rooms can be converted to an ICU room in a heartbeat. So they act as med surg rooms generally and when the need arises for a patient, the equipment comes in, the levels go up. And so we can have one, two, three, four ICUs. We, we can vary the number of rooms on that one. Yeah.
Okay.
Do you, do you have a pediatric, uh, unit?
Labor and delivery, yes. We have an excellent labor and delivery unit.
No, pediatric.
Oh, sorry, pediatric, no, no, on that one.
I've heard that Provo doesn't either anymore. Is that true?
The, the what, sorry?
Provo does not have one either, is that true?
Um, Utah Valley?
Yeah.
I'd need to check on that because I've not heard that they haven't got one. Let, let me, I'll take a jog into that and I'll let you know.
I've been told that they, they have to go to Salt Lake. You don't have a NICU unit either, do you?
We do not have a NICU, but we do have a space for one where we would like it to go on the third floor. When, when, when that day comes, we can say there, that's where the NICU is going to go. So, but that, that's a future plan, yeah.
What do you envision your expansion to be as far as beds? Thirty-two now, where do you, where do you hope to end up?
I, I know that we're looking at seven additional for the emergency room. In terms of imaging, that's not a, a part of the hospital that needs beds.
Med, med surge, basically.
That's in and out. Med surge, I don't know that there's plan to expand that.
Okay.
The, the patients that need longer stays, we are equipped. We're handling those just fine.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks for your support, everyone. Appreciate it.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now that our first quarter of fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five is over, I thought we'd come and give you an update of where we stand. Just as a brief summary, I put this memo together. Um, we'll just go over it really quickly and review it. Um, this doesn't give specific details, but just kind of gives you an idea each fund where we're at. So that first item is the general fund. Um, you can see at twenty-five percent of the year, so the, the first quarter, we're at twenty-five percent of the year. Um, revenues are at twenty-one percent and expenditures are at twenty-one percent as well, just a little over. Even though you can see that's about a hundred thousand dollars difference. Just as a note, expenditures usually in this quarter are more than the revenues because our big revenue source, the stream that comes in usually doesn't, for property taxes, doesn't come in until December. So that's a, a normal thing you'll see is being a little bit behind that first quarter. Um, on the capital funds, um, capital projects, uh, vehicles and equipment, computer and roads. Just as an item of note here, I just wanted to go over the things that we have purchased in this first quarter. The bucket truck, we've purchased some portable radios, um, a lawnmower, line locator, forklift, um, and the car lift. And then we entered into a five-year lease on an excavator. Um, and then we've also ordered the police, public works, and engineering vehicles. Those have not come yet. We have not paid for those yet, but we have ordered them. Um, the library design is underway. The public safety remodel, um, is underway and the PI meter project is also underway. Just a matter of note on the computer, the capital computer and technology, we are trending a little bit above in that, in that fund, just because we had the server replacement that we had to do because of the flood. We did get some money in from insurance. It just didn't cover all of it. So those expenditures are over right now. Um, and then also, uh, security cameras. Instead of a one-year lease, we did a three-year, um, which it was a lot less to do that. But we are trending over because we made those purchases upfront in the, in the first quarter. Um, on the capital roads, we're, um, in the middle of the Main Street project. We've done some annual micro-surfacing. Um, and then we've paid a road, a road bond payment for the year. The next fund, enterprise funds. So, um, this just, uh, reflects the revenues and expenditures and doesn't include any of the transfers going in and out. Just wanted to give you an idea where we are revenue and expenditure wise. So on the, um, water, we are at, the revenues are at twenty-seven percent. The expenditures are at twenty percent. So we don't have as much expenditures, but we are right there where we need to be with the, the revenues coming in for water sales. Um, on the sewer, same thing, um, right where we need to be as far as revenues coming in. And then on the pressurized irrigation, you can see that the revenue, um, is at forty-three percent at twenty-five percent of the year. That, um, is due to several factors. The first quarter of the fiscal year is when we have a lot of PI usage because it's warm, July through September. We had an actual season this year where we didn't shut the PI off for, um, another three weeks. We had extremely warm weather and so, you know, that's going to, um, be a factor in why we've got a little bit more revenue. But also we've, we've been working on the PI meter project. And this could have a lot to do with the efficiency of the meters. So we'll just keep watching that. Um, and, uh, in the next couple, couple of months, we'll just determine if those factors are going to pay an overall role in the amount of revenue we receive, uh, this year in the PI fund.
Hey Shannon, real quick on the water fund. Did you verify with Jason, we have also not purchased the meters on the culinary water side and that's why those expenditures are probably a little bit low as well as we've not, I think we planned two or three hundred meters to purchase this year and he hasn't purchased those yet.
Yep. And that's probably a factor in why we're, uh, trending under the twenty-five percent on the expenditures. There's just some things in each of those funds that we have not purchased yet. And that's normal to be trending a little bit lower at this time of the year. So. Um, in the special funds, community services is on track in, in, um, their funds, sports, classes, events, um, senior citizens, museum, royalty and library. I didn't see anything that was out of the ordinary that needed to be reported on. And the fire department, uh, you can see the revenues are, um, at twenty-eight percent with the expenditures at eighteen, almost nineteen percent. Um, this is due to, um, there has been several wild on fire deployments that have, um, happened this first quarter. And so there's been a lot of revenue brought in for those, uh, deployments. And then also the expenditures being a little bit low, um, has to do with, um, we haven't, we haven't filled those positions yet. So we're three months into the year and we haven't filled a lot of those part-time positions yet. So. Um, overall, everything is trending as projected. Um, we'll continue to watch, um, things like the building permits and sales tax to just make sure, you know, they're keeping up with things. And then if there's any recommends, recommended adjustments or changes, we'll discuss that with the council in the future. So, does anybody have any questions?
Doesn't seem like there was anything out of the ordinary. Most things seem to fall into place. There was one question I had that kept coming out when we were looking at water. We spent an extra seven or eight hundred thousand on that, uh, piping effort to replace that water line on Main Street. That's not necessarily in here. That's reflective of our money from the UDOT.
It, it's actually not. The replacement of that water line is actually coming from reserve funds in our capital repair and replacement fund. So remember that we had, I think, one point four million plus or minus when we looked at that. And about seven or eight hundred thousand of that will go towards that water line. That's a separate capital projects fund that we have been, the, the council and the city has been putting money in for probably close to a decade, I would bet, to, to help us for just things just like this.
Yeah, we actually did a budget amendment for that, um, transferring that money out of the capital repair and replacement into the water fund. So of course that's going to increase your, your budget and then we've spent it. So it's not going to, um, it's not going to make it look like you're over twenty-five percent of that first, even though we've spent the money because we increased the budget.
I, I guess caught in the back of my mind, we had discussed that bid in the original bid and then we walked back out of it only to replace it, but we got it for half price.
Not, not quite half price, but we got it for less because we already had the road open. We already had the work done. So, yeah, to, to get to the pipe a lot easier. And then when we started building the road over the top of it, we had some water features on Main Street that were probably not the best water features to have after we paved. So that was when we got into that and, and recognized that, that we needed to step back into it like what you said. Yes, we did. We, we knew that, that there could be a potential. We only knew one block of the water line had the issues that it had because it was down in front of the old public safety building. But as we started moving from the east to the west, we found that the entirety of that line was, was not very good. And so that, we, we, we did step back into it as you indicated, but for less than what the original bid was. I want to say the original bid was one point three or one point four million and we're at eight hundred thousand plus or minus.
And if I remember correctly, I think we've discussed this, uh, but that whole project will not be, we won't spend all of those funds we transferred this year. It'll, it'll carry over into next year when they open that road back up.
That is correct. Some of the, that seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand will be spent next budget year because they likely will not get it all done this, this fiscal year.
I'm not, I'm not sure if we'll get it finished before June or eleventh.
That's what we're saying is that we'll carry it over. Whatever, we, we've spent roughly about half of that eight hundred thousand and the other half will be spent potentially early next, or late this fiscal year or early next fiscal year. If it doesn't get spent, we'll just roll it over and it'll be available in the next budget year. Again, no other budget impacts than what's already been, been planned and discussed and approved by the budget amendment.
Any other questions?
I have a question. With sales tax, do we, do we see it trending as projected or?
Um, we are just a little bit ahead, maybe, um, I think last time I did it, it was twenty-six, twenty-seven percent.
In context with the season.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
But, but also remember that's just like PI water, right? So PI comes in during the summer and doesn't get, doesn't come in nearly as much in the winter. You, you have the Christmas season where we'll get lots of sales tax and then things drop off the face of the planet in January. So it is that ebb and flow as we go through. Will, by the end of the second quarter, we'll likely have much higher because of the Christmas spending, Christmas present spending, but then the third quarter will go down because Ja- January and February are considerably less. So again, it isn't.
Year-over-year for Q1, it's higher.
Yes. Yep, just, just barely above.
Just, just a couple of percentage points if I remember correctly.
Yep. Anything else?
That finishes that. However, uh, in, in our regular city council, uh, we're going to talk about the budget amendments. Are there any issues that we would like to go over or any questions council may have on those while we have Shannon here? Because we're going to let her go home in a little bit.
So I'm going to pull that budget amendment up now and we can take a look at it. But yeah, while Shannon's here, we wanted to, have I got the right one here? Sorry, I don't know why that's doing that. Hang on a second. My, my bad. Let me see if I can find that.
So while he's pulling that up, there's just the three items on the budget amendment.
Right here.
The first one is the park, or the, the first two are actually, um, corrections I needed to make. I found a, um, an error in the budget where, um, money got transferred into the general fund from water and sewer, into capital projects actually for, from water and sewer to do the gate down at Public Works. So it was twelve thousand five hundred from each of those, but it never got transferred out of the water and sewer. So this is just a correction. Reducing the amount of, um, fund balance that would have been rolling over that we didn't use, um, more revenues than expenditures. It's reducing that by twelve thousand five hundred dollars and, and then we have the, the, where it needs to be budgeted on both sides. The last one is the park impact fee. Um, so this is for the, um, recreation expansion. And that was just a reduction of the revenues, uh, for Prospector View since we didn't end up, we, we budgeted the whole entire thing, not knowing we were going to pay a payment right at the end of the year, last fiscal year. So we budgeted the whole entire thing. We don't need that. We'll just, use that, those funds and so reduce the revenue there and made a new line item and, and, uh, put the revenues or the expenditures in that new line item.
And that, that was because of the grant that we received that offset that and a few others.
So, so it's, it's cost the same amount, it's just the grant is, okay.
Yeah, it costs the same amount. We just made a majority of the payment for the Prospector View part in last fiscal year, even though the whole entire thing was budgeted this year. So, yeah, we didn't need that whole entire amount, which then, you know, frees it up and we, we're able to put it in a different line item for a different project.
Okay. Any other ta- uh, questions or things for Shannon? It's five minutes to six. You get to go run.
I gotta go run. Hey.
Thank you.
Okay.
Item number three.
Yeah. I'm trying to think how we should do this. You know, you know, uh, I think this is really cool because I came home, uh, after the last thing I had to go do, whatever that was, and sitting on my desk was a copy of his, uh, his diploma. And Ryan has been working on shoring this up for a few years and has put a lot of work into it. Every year as, as I go through his, uh, his, uh, review and, and Norm and I do his review, but, uh, he always writes himself up. I'm going to finish this this year. This is going to be done. And so I always make sure that I, I've made a, a comment, you know, Ryan's going to get this done this year. And, uh, I think one of the neatest things is, is Ryan has been a great chief. Is a great leader, has, uh, served this city well, um, from EMS to captain to chief and, uh, has been such an addition to our department. I think he makes a big difference. He, he looks out for the guys. He looks out for the department and, uh, one of his real goals was to have this, uh, diploma. And, uh, we just want to make a big deal of it tonight. I think, uh, this is a great goal that you have had. You've worked extremely hard and, uh, you know, I can think of a whole bunch of things. I can think of things I could make fun of you with, which I probably ought to do, but not do.
Oh, come on, rest him.
Oh, no, no. You know what? I've, I've stood in some pretty ugly spots with this big lummix and, uh, I, I appreciate all that he puts into it and, and to know that he was going to do this. And, uh, he works hard. You are dedicated to this city. We thank you for all of your efforts and, uh, I'm happy. We've got a long ways to go still and, uh, we're making strides. We're not walking, we're striding. So. Anything else?
No, just congratulations on achieving your, your bachelor's degree. This is awesome. This is really good.
I think we need to recognize his wife because it wouldn't have happened without her.
We're going to recognize the whole family.
Okay.
And we want a picture. So we've got to go in.
Yes.
Annots of monthly newsletters.
Bring, bring that. Oh, you got it up there. Okay.
Yeah, that's right. Somebody knows his habits.
He has habits. He knows the guy.
He, he is a guy. Great work.
What you don't know is my goal was to have my degree before my daughter.
Can we see this?
She's only, uh, what, a semester or two away? So I had to get mine up.
Yeah, he only won because I took semester talk.
Oh, well, you know, he still won though. Look whatever excuse you want.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congrats.
So you could have the masters by now.
Thanks, Ryan. Congratulations.
We sure appreciate you. Okay.
Okay.
Wait a minute, I've got the wrong paper up here. The CERA.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so mayor and council, uh, just to, as an update, I don't have a, a presentation, but I will update you on some of the numbers and where we stand. We have seventeen lots in the platted portion of the subdivision plus two parcels. We have sold all but one, two, three, four, all but six of those seventeen platted lots and all but two acres of one, one parcel that's still available. And some of those are currently the mayor's working with folks to potentially bring contracts to you agreements for sale of two of those right now. To date, we have just, we have put in just under six million dollars in the ground. That's, uh, pretty phenomenal for the mayor and I who are not developers, but have acted as developers the last two years.
Hey, you're, you're general contractor, right? So.
I, I am, but I, I'm not practicing. So. But yes, I, I. But yes, I, I, uh, so the, the, um, everything is in the black right now. We are, as we've talked about before, we are a little bit in the black. We're still waiting for some more. We have one more closing on the agreement that was done with Laize Masters last month. That closing will take place sometime between now and January fourth or fifth. And then we have again two more parcels or, or lots that are being looked at that we're trying to work with folks to bring you something to, for your consideration to, to sell as well. And then a couple of those are under, under, uh, contract for an option. So we'll, we'll not know what happens to those until sometime in January on that. And if they don't take the option, then that will come back and they'll be available for us to, to sell those as well. Either way, we will still sell them. It just depends on to whom.
Is there, is there interest in that lot that they gave up? That they're doing the shared parking lot?
Right.
Is, is that one of them that there's potential interest or no?
That, that is not one of the ones. That, so lots two and three are the ones that you're talking about. Lot one is now closed and they've gone through, they're going through the site plan process to their forty thousand plus or minus square foot building. The lots two and three are not under any kind of negotiation at this point in time, although we've had some interest. We don't, we don't have anybody kind of zeroed in on those at this point in time.
Well, yeah, but.
But two other ones we do.
And, and there are big interests in those right now.
That's awesome.
We're just kind of holding for, for a minute.
Yeah.
We'd like to get everything finished up too, you know? Um, I anticipate by March, we're gonna see a flurry of construction out there. Uh, buildings going up and, uh, it's, it's gonna be fun to see how this comes together next, next year. It, it'll look great.
Yeah, if you haven't driven out there, the second building is going vertical and they're, they're working hard on that. Uh, they'll be in obviously sometime in the springtime. Um, like I say, we've got three or four of the product parcels that were sold, they're, excuse me, are going through the site plan process, which once they get through the site plan process, they can go ahead and build, pull a building permit and start working on those. So we're, those are in various phases of development and moving those forward. But I agree with the mayor, we're gonna see a lot more going vertical. There still is some, e- even with the undone work or the unfinished work on the road that's out there, the roads and the water lines, we're still in the black and we still have the money set aside to go ahead and pay for those improvements. We are working on the sewer lift station right now. The Public Works folks are, are running some pipe and, and making some other adjustments in the, in the line to get the, the sewer lift station operational and, and taking us down that road. So that's good. You may recall in each one of the agreements, there's a twenty-five thousand dollar contribution from each property sale that we've done per building to help us with that, uh, to get that done. So that's in the two hundred, two hundred and, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar range to help with that, which has been really good. I think if I remember right, when we ordered that sewer lift station, just the lift station itself was about eighty thousand dollars some year and a half ago when we ordered it. It's here. We're, we're getting it ready. We still need to get Rocky Mountain Power to get the power hooked up to it and, and moving on with that. So things are, things are moving along and again, businesses are coming. Property taxes will be coming for those lots that have been sold, obviously, and then future jobs and, and potential sales taxes depending on what businesses go in there. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on that and.
Mayor, are you the, are you the Realtor, not Realtor, but the sole salesman? Is that, how, how are we advertising this? That's why we don't. So it's just people just demand?
We, we contact businesses. Businesses contact us. Um, we discuss together and with this group in, uh, closed meetings often. But, uh, for the most part, you know, we're not Realtors. We are not developers. We own property as a city and, uh, we responsibly taking care of the money. So, uh, yeah, no, we're not Realtors and we don't.
Has there been consideration to have it listed or, or just, just thinking of th- there's a cost benefit to it and but sometimes it, it's easier just to be able to choose.
Well, the, the one thing we can do with this being in the CDRA is as a city and as the CDRA, we can talk with them. We're also able to sell the property. We went through, uh, evaluation to where the property, uh, had eval, uh, uh, an assessed value attached to it and we worked from those. And, um, by not listing them, by not having companies that just want to come in and build things and then fight you day after day to put in, uh, uh, storage sheds or something like that. We want, we want businesses that will bring in, uh, jobs for people. And we've got that with what we've done so far. And the best part about it is these businesses have realized in almost every sense that they've saved six percent right off the top because they didn't have to pay for listing. They didn't have to pay for a Realtor. However, we work those costs through by utilization of our attorney drawing up all of those, uh, papers and, uh, they have been in, in almost every case, very thankful because they've been able to save money that they put right back into their business. And, uh, it's been kind of fun.
So we, we don't have it listed and, and I'm not sure there's an intent. That's the ma- after the mayor's direction, but we, we have had referrals from agents that have sent folks to us that we've talked to. And I don't remember if any of them have, have been the ones that have been purchased, but we have had referrals from local real estate agents and, and brokers that know that we have that out there and people are looking for it and they'll forward it to us. I, I probably talked to at least a half a dozen people over the last two years regarding that same thing.
That's true. We just don't list it.
We, it's not listed.
Haven't had to.
The other, the other thing is, is that according to.
But it's a good question.
To, to the mayor and council, at, at some point in time, maybe a year, a little bit more than a year ago, the intent was to build it out at some point, not necessarily like we're in a hurry to sell it or, in fact, the mayor, I believe in the council's intent was that if we leave a few of those lots for future councils to make those decisions, then that's great. That's, that's been part of the consideration. I see a couple of council members that have been here during that last two years shaking, nodding their head saying, yeah, that, that's, that's okay. And that's what our intent was, was again, not to necessarily offload that as fast as we could and get the money in, but to have the, the, the true intent met of, of the businesses that will bring the benefits to Santaquin City.
So have we seen an increase in the assessed value of those?
Oh, yeah.
Properties just recently since those lot two and three were released?
So we, we have not done any assessments or, or, um, appraisals on those.
Okay.
But, but the last three that we have sold have been well above the appraisal that's, that's, that was done on the initial setup of this. And I mean, well above. We had one appraisal that would, would have appraised it around a hundred or one point, a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy thousand per acre. And I think the last, the last lot that we sold was three fifteen per acre, something of that nature. So we're, we're well above and we're building our own value, I guess is the best way to put it. So we, we've not done an official appraisal, which we can do at the, at the mayor and council's direction, but, but we're well above the appraisal that was done at that point in time.
We used appraisers that we have used for properties around the city that when, uh, we've needed to do it under state law or something like that. So we know the caliber of appraisers that we've used. And then, uh, a lot of the people, especially the Realtors that have been involved, have come back to us and said, boy, you're right there. So.
Okay.
You know, even without listing with them, with other, with other things, we're getting some really good things going on. So.
That's good.
Been fun to be a part of it.
I'm just curious. I, I, I think it's going great. I, I, I was just wondering if that, there was any change.
Yeah, something we can invest back into the city with. So, you know, uh, just, just as a note to go along with that, the, uh, um, Friends of Santaquin, uh, can help direct and work with some of these funds as they come through. And, uh, they're actually looking at, uh, using our other funds to help with projects around the city. We'll be meeting this week. But, uh, this is an area where we could use even those kind of things with that type of money. So non-tax money, it's something that we can direct into a project that as a, as a board for the CDRA and then as the council can, can see an area and work with it. And I like those ideas. It's kind of fun to have some options.
That meeting's Thursday.
Yeah. You're gonna be there and you're gonna be there. Good.
So the meeting you're referring to is the Friends of Santaquin meeting?
Yeah.
Friends of Santaquin meeting?
Scouting?
You know, I did that for a long time.
I haven't heard that in a while.
Okay. Uh, do you want to go over some upcoming agenda?
So mayor and council on the, on the regular agenda, uh, upcoming, we have bills and minutes. I'm happy to answer any questions on anything that you may have there. We will enter into a public hearing for the budget amendment number two and open that up to anybody from the public that wants to make comment on that. Close that public hearing and then we'll look at the, the, uh, potential approval of the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, a budget amendment number two that our finance director Shannon Hoffman talked about just previous to this. And then we, now item number five is the scenic ridge development agreement. I will, you know that I attended the planning commission last week. With that on the agenda and the specific things that the planning commission looked at, I would refer you to the memo that Jason put together, which is pretty comprehensive, saying, here's what we get and here's what they get and, and, uh, I, I thought that the planning commission did a good job of, of answering, asking some good questions and hopefully they received answers for that. I do have one public comment to read on that when we get into that item. So we'll get to that point and I'll read that public comment. The next item on the agenda is a resolution to, for ratification of the agreement with Rocky Mountain Power for the second half of the undergrounding of the, the, uh, power along Main Street. Um, happy to answer any questions that you have on that. And then Jason will cover two uh, ordinances for the parking aisle width code amendment and the cul-de-sac length code amendment. If you have questions, Jason's happy to help.
I'd like to take advantage of the chief being here. This, this change in the length of the, uh, cul-de-sacs and also the widths, it seems like we, years ago, we restricted the length of that cul-de-sac for some purpose. Are we undermining ourselves? Do you have any problem with what's proposed?
I don't even remember what's proposed.
It's increasing from two fifty to five hundred feet on a cul-de-sac.
So as clarif- as clarification, it's not necessarily a proposal to increase it. It's basically, we had a couple of different areas within our code and with our standards and specs that were contradicting, or at least there was discrepancy. And so with, with, uh, our understanding of, of fire code and, and what's in the standards and specifications, we just found a spot where it, it had a two hundred and fifty foot length requirement and we're, we're trying to, to make it so that it matches and, and I think.
I saw that in the memo that you presented. I just want to make sure that we weren't undermining ourselves.
We refer back to the, the international fire code, which has more weight behind it than a city one. And so that's with, uh, the parking aisle width, the fire code, it requires a grader, so we have to increase that. So.
Right.
We, we look at the codes to make sure that they're in line and follow them.
So the.
I just want to make sure our apparatus will fit.
So it's not so much the length of it, right? They still have to have the turnaround or a cul-de-sac or a hammerhead or something at the end. It's not.
The bulb.
It's, yeah, it's not so much the length of it. It's, once they get past a hundred and fifty feet, if I remember correctly, they have to have some turnaround for the apparatus, whether it's a hammerhead or whether it's the bulb out. It's not, so it's not necessarily the length. Again, as Jason's indicated, we're not increasing the length. We're just bringing all parts of our code and our standards together on that five hundred foot length. And the, the, the key for the fire department, correct me if I'm wrong, Ryan, is the fact that you have apparatus turnaround at the end of that regardless of what the length is after a hundred and fifty feet, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, so we might require a turnaround midway and then a bulb at the end. So, and I can tell you when we come to review those, I'm pretty hard on them. I don't let them just slide and.
Any issues as far as snow removal?
Not my circus.
So, so again, we still require in a cul-de-sac, we still require some type of a snow storage area there at the end, regardless of length, regardless of meeting fire code, which they still have to do. We still have that same item in there to, to make sure that we have snow storage. And I will mention also, at my direction, staff did visit with Ryan about this to make sure that we were not having any issues with it. So recognizing that that's a reason that you have DRC and, and professionals here that do that, so to make sure we can work together and we're not causing any conflicts or interest there.
Thank you.
We do talk and we review those very well. This has been a week and I don't remember the exact.
We, we all know that you, we all know that you talk. Thank you.
And maybe while we're on it, the other, the other one, the parking aisle width code amendment, that's really just coming in line with fire code to, to make sure that we got the extra two feet of width, uh.
Yeah, I saw in your memo, we're trying to get everything to be the same. I just wanted to.
Right, right.
Touch base.
So really, these are kind of cleanup items, if you will, these two ordinance amendments.
Thank you.
You know, the guy that originally wrote those never had driven a fire truck and tried to turn one around in that anyway. So you know, you could argue whether it was snow in there or whether it's the summer when all the cars are parked around in there, you're still gonna have a tough time.
You are, and we're, we're starting to notice more of these issues as more commercial developments come in. We were a bed and breakfast community for so long and we didn't have a lot. Now that we're starting to deal with it, we're catching those, we're updating and coming in line.
Good.
It's, it's a learning process for all of us.
Good.
And then mayor, the last item on the, on the agenda for consideration will be approval of the twenty twenty-five meeting schedule that Emily has put together for us. That's just basically saying next year, here's what we believe the, the, the meeting dates will be. It, it may change. We've seen that change when we've had Orchard Day conflicts or when we've had Fourth of July or something like that. But I think Emily's done a good job with putting that together, but we're happy to answer any questions that you have about that. And then lastly, we will have need to go into a closed session uh, at the mayor's direction. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on any of those items.
Are there any other questions or anything we need to discuss in this meeting? Then I would ask for a, uh, motion to adjourn. So moved? It's been moved. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, well, Brian?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
We're out.
Okay.